All right, to kick off the update, we're out here at the Ground Round on a kind of a gloomy Wednesday, February 6th, talking with Travis Shulze. Now Travis, this is a meet the candidates get together out here at the Ground Round. The election obviously coming up in April. A lot of the candidates are running with an opponent. You are not.
I am not.
So keep that in mind. Why is it so important to you to be out here Travis?
Um, I think, I'm just as curious about what some of the new candidates are bringing to the table as maybe some of the people not running. So, um, I want to take the opportunity to meet some of them and, um, kind of get their view on some things. And, um, I think it's important too for even if, you know, there's a couple of us running unopposed, um, people need to know where we're standing. So, um, that's kind of why I'm here today.
You've been on the council for a while now. What's the most difficult part of being on the council you thought would not be difficult that you've now adjusted to?
Um, I think the slowness. I think I, I thought, um, you know, we talk about something.
Yeah.
Take action on it.
Yeah.
And, and things get done, but, um, and not that the slowness I found is necessarily bad. Um, I think a good, healthy debate is, is, is sometimes needed, but I was not prepared for, for kind of how slow things, things really, how long things take to get done.
All right Travis, if we look back at 2018, one of the hot items that was discussed, that hasn't been discussed for a while, but eventually will probably come back, and that's ATVs.
For sure.
In your area, did you get a lot of feedback? Did people like it, people not like it? What did you hear in your area?
Um, I heard a lot of support from the local business owners, not so much, um, the people that live in my, in my district.
Okay.
And, and they're all for it. Um, and to be perfectly honest, the proposed route runs one house away from my house.
Okay.
And, and I, I don't have a lot of the same concerns that I've been hearing, um, with, with speed and things like that. I think our, our police staff does a great job and they'll address those concerns as needed, but, um, I got a lot of support from the, from the local business owners and not a lot of complaints or, um, much of any comments from residents in the district.
Okay, now you currently are one of the youngest members on the council.
Yep.
Is that a good thing? We have, obviously you're very, easily the youngest person. Uh, is that a good thing? Do you relate to elderly people? Not that they're old, but people are certainly older than you. Uh, is that a good thing or what's your take on that Travis?
I think so. I think, um, having some, some youth on, on the council, um, to bring a different perspective, I think is good. Um, we're definitely in, in a time, I think, in Toma where things are starting to, to grow and things are starting to speed up. And, um, I think a large part of that is the, the younger generations are getting involved and, and they, they have different expectations. They want different things. Um, so yeah, I think, I think the youth is good.
All right, we have Murray's on Main coming in the very near future. Brand new hospital at the end of the year. So 2019 is, has a bright future for Toma, doesn't it Travis?
It does, absolutely. Um, and it's exciting. Um, you know, I've, I've lived in the area my entire life and I can't remember a time when we have had so many projects, um, going on at the same time. So, so it is good. Um, and, um, I live in the downtown and the, the, getting the downtown back and, and getting those empty buildings filled with, with thriving businesses is important to me. So, um, yeah, it is very exciting. Um, I like where we're headed.
All right, right now we're at the Ground Round with Travis Shulze. It's a meet, greet for the candidates running for city council in April. Travis is running unopposed, but as he told you earlier, still wants to be out here to get other few points from the other people. If we looked ahead to 2019 Travis, what's on your do list you'd like to see happen on, for the council?
Um, I, I think ATV trails are, are important. I think that needs to be revisited, um, whether, whether it gets approved or not, or I think it needs to come back to table. I think there's enough interest in that. That's high. And then revitalizing the downtown. Um, I, I really liked the, uh, music on Milwaukee, those kind of events that bring a crowd to the downtown. Um, so those are the top two things on my list is to, to get the downtown going and I think we need to, to talk about ATVs again.
And also brand new streetlights coming down the road, right?
Yeah, for sure. Yeah, very soon.
Okay Travis, thank you for your time.
Absolutely.
Appreciate it. And it'll, well, we'll see you next week for the council committee home.
Awesome.
Thank you for joining me.
Thank you.
All right, continued out here at the Ground Round on a gloomy Wednesday, February 6th. Meet the candidates. Some of the candidates are running unopposed, some are not. This is Sue Holm. Now Sue, you are running for city council. Let's start right there. What makes you say I want to throw my hat in the ring?
I just had a lot of concerns about some of the money that was being spent.
Okay.
Closed sessions, the city council that public weren't aware of, um, concerns in that regard. Um, it just brought a lot of things to light for me that there was things that I think the public should be made aware of, that we weren't allowed to be made aware of. And I am one of those people that if there's a problem, I want to know about it. Um, I'm a big girl. I can take what is, um, coming down the pike, but I, I don't like to be not allowed that information.
Yep.
And I just found that it was, there was a lot of that going on. And people around me, neighbors around me too, were offering questions. And have you heard about what's going on? Have you heard this? Have you heard that? And that's why I decided to throw my hat in the ring. Um, not to, not to spread the rumors or whatever, but to find out the facts. And I think as a citizen, you need to be made aware of what's going on, what's happening in your community, and you should have a say in it.
Okay, so we're sitting down here at the Ground Round in February. Of course, the election is coming up in April. Uh, when that rolls around, I would imagine your platform will be a lot of things we've already touched on.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Do you yourself decide to go run for council Sue? Does somebody, do your people, your constituents say, hey, we think you should run? How do you make that? How do you come to the final decision to throw your hat in the ring for council?
I'm the kind of person that sticks up for the, the underdog.
Okay.
And I know there's a lot of elderly people in, in our district. And they have a lot of concerns. They're, they're fighting higher taxes. They're fighting cost of living increases. And if I can put in a word in one way or another, or help them through some issue that they have in their community, um, I'd like to do it. I'd like to be able to, uh, have that opportunity.
I know you're also a huge person right now, along with Wayne Kling, who's a steward of society, pushing for the restoration of the log cabin down at the aquatic center. I would imagine that's also pretty high on your do list, right?
It is. Um, the, between the museum and the preservation of the log cabin, that's kind of been a priority of mine lately. And I've always been a huge history buff and I do appreciate what, um, what Wayne has been doing for the cabin. Um, I've been able to have a seat on the preservation committee for Toma. And also, um, I was just elected to the board for the history museum itself. So it's always been kind of a passion. Um, my kids have always been interested in our family history and where, where my family came from, my husband's family. And I just want to help if there's other kids in town or if there's other, even adults, adults as well. If there's a way of, of informing them, helping them figure out where we've come from, where we've been, and, um, the trails it took to get here from our ancestors. Um, I think it just, it's what formed us. And so I think that's what is important, to, to know where you've been, where you've come from.
Okay, and you're running against Remy Gomez in April, correct?
I am, yes sir.
Okay, as we wrap it up with Sue Holm, we're down at Ground Round on Wednesday, February 6th. Meet the candidates, running for city council in April. Some are running unopposed, some are running opposed. As we wrap it up Sue, is there maybe one issue going on in the city right now that really said, hey, I need to get on the council, get my input involved, or nothing really jumped out?
I have a personal interest just with the possibility of ATVs coming into town.
Okay, okay.
Um, I lost a cousin to an ATV accident and very much nothing that was her fault or the drive, other truck driver's fault. And the idea of bringing them into a city where there's even more traffic than what she was dealing with, and in her situation, that's been kind of my, I want to say, just a, a passion as well. Um, I don't see the need, I don't, I think it's just opening up some, an avenue that we really shouldn't go down. ATVs were not made for hard surface roads. They were made for trails and back in the woods. And, um, I enjoy being back in nature, have rode ATVs myself, but I don't want to see them on city streets.
Okay. And that's an item that certainly you would think down the road will come back to the council, won't it?
Yes, it will. It'll be coming back.
Okay, and as I talked about with Travis Shulze a moment ago, 2019, Murray's on Main opening soon, brand new hospital at the end of the year. 2019 and the future look pretty bright for Toma, don't they?
There's a lot of things going on and it's an exciting time, but it can be kind of scary. And so we have to be concerned, we have to be careful, um, how, how we're perceiving the city and how we're presenting the city. And I just want everything to, to go well and, you know, move the hospital ahead, you know, um, hopefully, uh, when the three gen project is opened up, that'll be an asset to the city. We can just cross our fingers and hope and pray that that works out well.
All right, as we wrap up with Sue Holm, a little background on yourself. So how long you been in Toma? Lifetime resident?
Um, born and raised in Sparta, Wisconsin.
Okay.
Went to school in Madison and met my husband there and just stayed. We were there for 40 years. Just moved back. Um, we've been in Toma now five years.
All right.
So my husband's job changed. He got a job with Organic Valley in Lafarge. And so we decided to move lock, stock and barrel and moved up here. So, moved back to home turf.
Well, we're glad you're in Toma. Welcome back to Toma. So thank you so much for talking with me and good luck in the April election. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
All right, we're down at the Ground Round on Wednesday, February 6th, to meet the candidates night. Now some candidates, some council members running opposed, some are not, some do not have an opponent, but this is Remy Gomez. Remy, we met your opponent Sue Holm a moment ago. Now you're on the council, but the unique thing about you being on the council was just a one-year term. So you're kind of just still getting your feet away, aren't you?
Yeah, yeah. Um, definitely I had a little bit of research done prior to, to being appointed. Um, I'd lost the race to Larry before he did resign.
Correct, correct.
Um, and then I'd ran for mayor prior, so I had some relationships in the room.
All right, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Nope.
Good go. Keep going.
I, yeah, the relationships has made it easier. I mean, being able to sit there and, um, have the confidence of having a pretty good idea of what I'm talking about, or at least what's on the agenda and making a healthy, educated decision.
Okay, so you had an option, you were trying to stand the council as an operator.
Yes.
So what item or items is out there right now dealing with the council and the city, Remy, that makes you say, hey, I want to be a part of that?
Yeah, uh, the growth, the growth. Uh, working with Tina at the chamber, um, the work that she's doing as far as getting new business in and getting Toma's word out there. Um, but I'm excited to be a part of the growth and what we're going to do going forward. Um, I work in our school districts now, so I see the need. Um, but at the same time, I see a lot of other parents from other cities that locally have the need as well, um, for, for just growth in general and a place to be.
Travis Shulze, you talked with first, he's running unopposed, and of course Sue Holm, your opponent. We sat down with her before you and I, Remy. Uh, one of the items we did touch on, would like to get your viewpoint on it. Uh, it'll come back again eventually on the agenda, and that's ATVs. What's your take on that?
Um, I would love to say I had a, a great answer for you. Honestly, the, since I've been sitting, we haven't talked as a council about it.
Okay.
So really the research on my end, I feel like I'd be doing a disj, or injustice to comment without having the proper research done.
Absolutely.
But when it does come up, um, I'll take a look at both sides. I've always been a, a fair in the middle and look at everything. Um, but as of right now, I'd say I don't really have enough together to give a good, good, honest answer either way.
Okay, and you, you currently, you also are the J D Girls Basketball Coach right now, aren't you?
Yep, um, in my second year.
Uh-huh.
Love where I'm at. Marcus got a great program that we run. Um, again, for, for the school and for the growth, um, is what I'm here for. I'm here to be able to help those kids, um, that I have come through there, have a little bit better city living.
So not only city issues, but you can certainly have enough background with school issues and other items, don't you?
Yes, um, firm believer that one of the bigger things that we could have would be a, a rec center here in the area. Um, and not just a rec center where Toma can go, but if you stretch out 50 miles, you got to go to the Dells, you got to go to Black River, you got to go to, yeah, go to La Crosse to really get a solid place where you can hone your skill. Um, and I don't think it just goes to sports. Um, I think Special Olympics, Boys and Girls Club, wrestling, gymnastics. I think we all could evolve and have a place to commonly go, um, right here, tight, and it'll make people want to come in, stay here, as well as take care of the people that are already here.
Remy, there's currently push going on for an indoor swimming pool. You kind of touched on that a moment ago. So you'd like, kind of like to see in the next couple of years, an indoor facility, uh, which would obviously include a pool, right?
I would probably add on to the pool.
Okay.
Make that, make that an addition, I should say, to, to a rec center. Um, not that I don't think there's a need, um, because I know we have a hack with swimming team. I know a couple of the boys and girls personally, so, um, not to say that it's not there, but it is a huge maintenance upkeep. It's, it's more than just turning a light on for a basketball court.
Yeah.
It's, it's a lot to it and I don't want to, I wouldn't want to do something partway when there's a bigger need, when we can do it in a pragmatic fashion and actually get the funds and get a proper pool in there.
Yeah, I think the bottom line is, it costs a lot of money to maintain this, doesn't it?
Yep. If you ask anybody, especially, I mean, you could even go out to Three Bears Lodge and ask them how much it costs to run their, their water park there. Granted, it wouldn't be a water park, but still takes the upkeep, um, still takes the knowledge, the staff, the training. Not that we don't have that locally, but I, I would, I would probably lean more towards an addition of that, um, in the future years.
Okay, Murray's on Main opening in very near future, Toma, with a brand, Toma Royal Hospital opening, brand new hospital end of the year. If we elected Remy in April, what's on your do list you'd like to see happen this year that maybe we haven't talked about?
Um, I, I really think the downtown rehabilitation. Um, we haven't talked about it, um, and it wouldn't be my idea, um, but I'm totally on board with projects that we can get in, in the Tid districts.
Okay.
Things that we can get in to make them grow. The hospital, being out there is awesome. It's in my area. I've got to hear the, the buzz, um, created around it. Um, it's a need, um, something that is going to create a lot of jobs, a lot of people coming in. And then at the same time, um, building up our downtown rehab. We have a beautiful downtown, but with small tweaks that we can make available, um, now that we have a good, a good business in there, ready to, ready to rock and contribute to the downtown Tid. Um, and as far as Murray's on Main, I'm excited.
Yeah, I think a lot of people are.
I've lived here my whole life and I remember the days of the TP and I remember how local, it's a centralized spot. I mean, if you go to Toma, TP was the place to go. Um, and to see it sit there for so long, um, I felt, I felt, again, didn't do it justice. Um, it's a beautiful property and I'm excited for what the Yankees are doing outside of just Murray's on Main, but.
Correct.
The storefronts coming in, the buzz that it'll have. It looks beautiful already. Um, yeah.
All right, right now we're at the Ground Round on Wednesday, February 6th. It's a meet the candidates night for the council race coming up in April. This is Remy Gomez. He's running against Sue Holm. Remy hoping to stand the council. Remy, I, you only touched on it a couple of moments ago. A little background yourself, have you been in Toma your whole life?
Yep, uh, born and raised here in Toma. I'm a member of the town family. Harold and Margaret were my grandparents.
Okay.
My mom was Iris. She's passed away a couple of years back. I graduated in 2000 here. Um, born and raised here, moved away a couple of years, um, off to college in La Crosse and Rochester, came back, um, beautiful girlfriend Kayla, um, two kids, Robert and Will here in high school, and then we have a third grader Chance who's in Miller. Um, yeah, I've always been active, especially in parking wrecks. Um, I ref, help ref for when I can for Joe Prost, keep our men's league going. Play a lot of softball, always out there coaching, um, yeah, involved in the future, definitely.
The people are looking at and saying, why do I recognize the name? Why do I recognize the face? Not that long ago you ran for mayor, didn't you?
Yeah, yeah. And you know, talk about a learning experience.
Yeah.
Um, not that I didn't know what I was getting into, but, um, like I said, the relationships that I got to build in that short time for a campaign, even though it was a loss, um, I tell my basketball girls, you take a lot from a loss.
Yeah.
How can I do it? What relationships can I keep going? And luckily Roger and Tina and Mike and everybody on board then that is still on board have been great with me, helping me. Um, Tina's been super. Uh, Roger is the open door policy that just lets me come in and ask questions. Um, most of these things that are on the agenda, to be honest, um, were, were oblivious to me. Uh, but it takes a little bit of research, do your homework, um, step in, ask the right questions, uh, or ask any question to the right people and you'll get a good answer. You'll get an honest answer.
All right, to wrap up with Remy Gomez, Remy, you replaced Larry Secret on the council. Just out of curiosity, when Larry announced he was calling it clicks, so to speak, did that surprise you?
No, me and Larry actually, um, got a chance to talk during our, during our race, um, briefly. One of our winter snowstorms. You guys know Larry, apparently he wears shorts all the time.
I was going to say, now you don't wear shorts.
I don't wear shorts in the winter, but I feel like that might've been my edge right there. Um, but I ran into Larry on one of our local gas stations, um, we had a talk and he expressed how happy he was to see somebody else, um, also have an interest in, in our district. Um, so he had kind of mentioned that he was towards the end and he's served a great, great tenure and did a lot of great things, sat on the park board and public works for a while, so, so he's did quite a bit. Um, so, is it surprised? I wouldn't say surprised, I would say more, more, um, I was ready. I, I was ready for it. More than, more than able to take on the position, more than willing, still.
So if you look at the big picture, Remy, there are some years where just everybody on the councils are running unopposed. This year not the case and that's a good thing.
That's an awesome thing. Um, not only should you always have a choice voting, um, I encourage any, any civilian that has a, um, an interest in political, just to come down and sit in on the chamber, listen to the haggin and, and hear our, um, hear our council meetings. Um, if you get to sit there and really see it and you get to dig into it, it's one thing, but then when you actually get involved in it and you take a, take a certain amount of pride in what goes on in the town, um, I think everybody would want to. Uh, but I'm, I just met Sue for the first time tonight as well. Um, seems like a nice lady. Um, yeah.
What's your personal take on this meet and greet going on tonight, Remy? That's a good thing, isn't it?
Again, Tina's awesome. Tina's got us out there, um, not just council members, not just for the mayor, not just for herself and the chamber, but she's, she's this. This is, this is getting Toma together, this is getting Toma out there and on the map and moving forward. And this is great.
Remy Gomez, thank you for your time and good luck in the election in April. Appreciate you making time for me.
Appreciate it.
Okay, try and restart this about five seconds. All right, Roger, at the Ground Round on a gloomy Wednesday, February 6th, and we've kind of moved outside the main room where it's, uh, meet the candidates, meet and greet. A lot of people running for city council in April and throwing their hat in the ring this year is Donna Evans. Nice enough to join us right now. Now Donna, you've been involved in a lot of activities in Toma, but what makes you say, hey, I want to be a part of the council?
Well, it's, I've, I've been born, I was born here, raised here, been involved with kids' sports, my activities. And I guess I just felt it was time that I got more involved with the city. I want to see the city of Toma grow to prosper. We have a lot of possibilities, a lot of growth in this community and I want to be a part of that and, you know, give my opinion and hope it works out.
Was there maybe one issue that is currently going on in the city that made it easier to decide to throw your hat in the ring?
I guess my, it was kind of like I'm into more of the economic development and tourism. Toma has a lot to offer. We have a lot of parks, we have the swimming, we have skate park, we have hockey. There's a lot here. We have a lot of great small town businesses and I want to see them grow and prosper. And I want to see our community be a safe community. And so I'm basically on economic development and tourism. How can we grow and looking forward to the future?
Okay, now, probably not a fair question to you because you haven't been on the council before, but if you are elected in April, Donna, an issue that certainly will come back later this year is ATVs. So let me ask you, when April rolls around, right before the election, when you have a platform, what would your platform be so you hope people elect you in April?
Okay, and I haven't been involved in it, so I don't know a lot of it.
Correct.
I'm in the process of researching what was said and done before, you know, when it got brought up and talked about and when it was turned down. So I'm in the process of that. I've got the trails that were mapped out. I want to talk, find out was, what the DOT sponsored, what the chief of police sponsored, where the trails go, talk to our residents, my constituents in the community and see how they feel about it. Of course, tourism is a big, one of my platforms, so I want to see how this can work to be safe for our community, safe for our residents, but also bring tourism and business to our outlined businesses around the city of Toma.
All right, Murray's on Main will be opening in very near future and then we have, of course, a brand new hospital at the end of the year. So, things look bright for 2019 and beyond for Toma, Donna, don't they?
Yes, they do. By having that main spot in the middle of Toma filled and occupied again, you know, missing the TP and missing Ed, that was a big draw point for Toma. And having Murray's on Main and that building, which is going to be fabulous and beautiful inside and what it has to offer will be a great, great for our downtown Toma, for the middle of Toma, as, which is the heart. And then having the hospital coming into the Toma area on that side of town, on the south side of town, helping that grow, because that's an area of my concern. I would like to see that area grow and be prosperous and I think the hospital will help.
I want to get a plug in for you, because a lot of people may not know this, uh, Special Olympics Christmas party every year, it gets bigger and bigger every year and you're a huge part of that. You're behind the scenes and I know you don't like the limelight, but, uh, thank you for being a part of that.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate that. We have such a great time. When we first started doing this, we had like maybe 10.
Yeah.
And now we were up to 47, I believe, that we give gifts to. And there, there is a lot that goes into it. There's a lot of planning. We try to buy items now. My daughter has been big with this in the last few years also. And we try to get the names out there, something that they want and purchase something. And just seeing their eyes and their smile over a hat or a sweatshirt or some bath works or something is just amazing. And they have so much fun and love, no matter what age. We have infants, up to 70-year-old gentlemen that are there and it's, it's wonderful. And just to see their eyes light up and their smiles is wonderful. It fills my heart with love and joy.
Okay, how many years have you been at RIA Federal Credit Union?
I've been at RIA Federal Credit Union for 34 years now. I started out as a part-time teller with VA Community Credit Union and then RIA emerged in 1986. teller with VA Community Credit Union. And then RI emerged in 1986. So I've been actually working with the credit union business for over 34, 35 years now.
I guess where I was going with that is so if elected to council and it's money issue the council's talking about, does this background help you?
Yes, I think it'll help me. Working with the different diverse members that we have, of what their needs and wants are. And also my financial background will help as far as being able to rationalize and figure out where the money's coming from, what type of loans we should get to secure some of the money. I think that'll help me, yes.
There are many years on the council, races are up and hardly anybody's running opposed, unopposed. This year, there's a lot of people running opposed. And that's a good thing, right?
Well, it's a good thing. I think so many years, and it's like a lot of boards. You're on the board. And if you're going to keep running and stay on there, a lot of people don't say, I can do it. You know, I wanna run and put my hat in. And it's every organization, whether it's hockey or 4H or, you know, any organization, you got the same people all the time. And it's always good to get new people in, new ideas, fresh eyes. Not to say that anybody's bad, but sometimes it's good. And I guess it's kinda how I felt. And Adam and Remy and everybody kinda said, you know, we can do this. If we don't say yes and do it, nobody will ever jump forward. So they can see other people are at least trying to run and wanna have their voice and their opinions, you know, looked out and understood.
Donna Evans currently working at RI Federal Credit Union for, ironically you mentioned 34 years because that's how many years I've been doing this. Running for city council against Wayne Kling in April. Donna, thank you so much. I know you're very busy. Thank you for sitting down with me. And good luck in April.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Greg. Bye.
Alright, this is Adam Giggas, who is running for the city council against Mary Ann Knessky in April. Like a lot of people, Adam, we've already talked with you, throwing your hat in the ring for the first time. Take me back. What makes you say, hey, I wanna be a part of the council?
Well, it's, really if you look at the city of Toma, I've been here, we moved here when I was young. And the city of Toma has really grown a lot over the past couple of years. And it would just be exciting to really be a part of that. This is where my kids go to school. This is where my wife works. And this is where I've lived, you know, when I consider home. So it'd be nice to shape the community, bring it forward, help it grow and, and make it a place that I can really be proud of living here and make it a great place for not only my own kids, but also for like the kids that I coach, when I coach soccer and things like that as well.
Okay. So what's the determining factor, Adam, that says, hey, I'm definitely gonna run for council? What makes that all happen?
Well, it was suggested to me that I've already started kinda hanging out in the community a bit more. I joined the Toma Lions this year. And I had someone mention to me that, I knew someone on council, they said that I'd be a good fit for council, that I kinda like to argue anyway. So it kind of, it kind of helps sort of be in that mindset where debate is something that I enjoy. But really just starting to realize now, as I get more involved in the community, doing things, that we have a vibrant community and that there's things that I can do to help make that grow by, you know, encouraging some of the things like the TIDS and stuff that we can, that we can help for the city.
Okay. When we get closer to April, obviously elections in April, what will your platform be? What will you tell people that hopefully will make them vote for you in April? What's your platform gonna be, Adam?
The main thing that I think is we need to develop the tax base first and foremost. And I think there's three main pillars to that. And that is encouraging population growth where we can. Developing whatever sort of strategic partnerships we can with local businesses and organizations. And then tourism, which, you know, things like Cranfest and Tractor Pool are huge for that. You know, we can pull in room tax, right? With the local businesses, stuff like the, the TIFs that we have now, really help generate money for the community that we can put, we can generate more revenue even without necessarily, or more taxes, without, without really having to kind of expand so much population wise, right? And this affords us the ability to put more money back into the city where we can fix things like the roads or the streetlights, you know, or revitalize the parks, things like that.
Alright, just sat down with Donna Evans, who's running against Wayne Kling for council. And I asked you the same thing, and maybe not a fair question, Adam, because you officially aren't on the council yet. But give me your take on ATV's. If you're elected to council, what's your take on that?
ATV's are an interesting issue. It's something that everyone seems to talk about, but I don't actually know much about the issue itself. So it would definitely be something I'd have to do some research into. I think whatever we decide, we have to make sure the, the decisions we make are responsible, that they're gonna be responsible for not only the citizens of Toma, but, you know, if we do allow ATV's, that we make responsible rules for the people that would be utilizing while they're here. So it's one of those things I'm definitely interested to find out more about. And it's part of the reason being here tonight, I can kind of find out what this is all about.
This is really a great idea by the chamber and Tina to make this happen, isn't it?
Oh, it's incredible. I was, I was really excited to find out because it's very rare that you can kind of find an arena where you can kind of bring people together to talk about the things that are important to them.
Okay. A little background on yourself. What do you do for a living?
I am an information technology instructor for mid-state technical college.
Okay.
I've been doing that for about a year and a half. Before then, I've been in the information technology industry for about 10 years before that. So I've worked, you know, I've worked for McCross and I've worked for Organic Valley. And so it's one of the things I really enjoy. I really like information technology and I really like bringing it to other people. I like to show them the things that I know and kind of pass that knowledge on. Outside of that, I am also the assistant varsity coach for the boys soccer team at the high school here in Toma. So I've been doing that, all told, seven years total, but it's been split up between two years ages ago and then a five-year stretch now. So definitely, I, you can see how it matches up with teaching, right?
Absolutely, yeah.
Working with other people and imparting knowledge and kind of helping mentor them through. So I think it's, it's one of the things that's really important to me is that you, where you take someone and you just develop them in such a way that you leave them in a better place than when you found them. I think that's really important.
Well, when I talked with Remy Gomez earlier, he's a JD Girls basketball coach. And talking about city issues that involve maybe something school district related, being involved with soccer, you could have some input in that, couldn't you?
Absolutely. It's something that we are very big on, on the men's soccer team, is that we want to develop excellent men first, and then good soccer, great soccer players second, right? So it's important to us that you're putting forth the right effort, that you go about solving your problems and issues the right way. And that you're, you know, you're developing into a good person. And then, you know what, once I know that you're doing that, then we'll make you a good soccer player. And that's the same sort of idea that we wanna bring, you know, to Toma. Just, we want to bring these people into our, our society together that are going to be productive, that are going to be proud of where they live, right? And wanting to do more with the ghetto.
Alright, Adam, we have Murray's on Main opening in the near future, brand new hospital by the end of the year. If elected to council in April, what might be on that wish list we haven't touched on you'd like to see happen down the road?
Um, I think the biggest thing, and the city is already moving in this direction, is the downtown revitalization project. So we have these amazing buildings that are going in. And now this pool of money that we can make available to local businesses to help kind of spruce up our downtown and kind of, I don't wanna say make everything match, but just, you know, increase the curb appeal, right? We already have a unique community. And now we have a means with which that we can work with our local businesses to kind of make that shine through, right? And I think that definitely our downtown could use a little more attention, so.
Adam, thank you for talking with me. And good luck on April. I'm not sure when it is in April, but the election, April 2nd? Thank you so much. You have kids in school, don't you?
Yep, I do. I have two kids. They both go to the Grange right now.
Okay.
So, and, yeah, fun fact too, I've, I live in Ward 1 right now, but I actually grew up in Ward 2. So I've
Oh, really? Okay.
I've got a long bit of longevity in the district that I live in, so.
And if I may ask, you're, like Travis shows here, you'd be one of the younger council members, wouldn't you?
It seems that way. I'd hate to ask people for their ages.
Right, I agree. I agree.
I wouldn't even guess.
I agree, yeah. Okay, thank you so much. I know you wanna go back and mingle with the people out at the ground round. Thank you for your time. And good luck in April.
Awesome. Appreciate it.
Right, right, right at the ground, Ron. It's a meet the candidates night. And this is Jeff Cram. Now Jeff, unlike a lot of candidates we've talked with, you're running unopposed.
That's correct.
So why is it so important for you to be here tonight?
I think it's important to be out in the community anytime that you can be out. I mean, our constituents for the city are here, maybe not necessarily my residents. And maybe some of my residents will show up tonight. But this is where people can have their voices heard. This is where people can talk to their local officials, explore ideas, understand topics that we're talking about at a council level, and just know what's going on in the community. So it's always important to get out and, and talk to anybody anytime that you can.
Okay. If we look ahead to 2019, is the ATV issue maybe the biggest on paper right now? That's not gonna go away?
Um, you know, I think we've got a lot of things going. You know, obviously we've still got TID districts that have to be finished up. We've got a lot of building that's going on. You know, the ambulance garage is something that's coming up. I think there's a lot of things out there. I think ATV's is, is an item. I like the way that we've explored it so far this year is we're looking at it and we're saying, we need to learn, we need to talk to residents. We need to understand how people feel. We need to look at the routes that are out there, understand, is this really the best, the best way for us to go? And, and see if it works. There's a lot of different impact depending on where those ATV's are gonna go. Personally, I do think it's good for tourism, but I think we need to make sure that we're, we're coming at it from a tourism level, making sure that we can get them into our hotels, get them into our restaurants, and utilize the ATV routes the way they're meant to be used. I don't want it to just be seen as, as riding ATV's down the road just to simply ride the ATV's down the road. I think it has a place, but I think it needs to be thought about. I think the residents that are on those routes need to be consulted. And we need to make sure that we're doing the best for everybody.
Okay. But that's an issue that certainly is, I mean, it's not going away soon, is it?
I, I don't think it's going away soon. Ultimately, we also haven't had it back on the agenda since we had it several months ago. So I, I certainly do think it'll be back on the agenda again. It really can't be, you know, can't not be on the agenda again. So.
Okay. You're running unopposed, but a lot of candidates are running opposed with an opponent this year. And that's a good thing, right?
I think that's a wonderful thing. It's great to see people get excited about city government. I think we need more people to get excited about city government. There's a lot going on in this community. There's a lot of important decisions that need to be made. There's a lot of potential growth that can still come to this area. And we have, you know, again, it's, it's nice to run unopposed, sure. But at the same token, I really do enjoy that more people are getting involved. Same type of deal. I do a lot of service organizations things. And you see this happen time after time, people running unopposed and kind of things getting stagnant. I would love to see, you know, some new people get a, get a chance to learn more about city government and learn more about the way things are going.
Right. Murray's on Main will open in the near future, brand new hospital at the end of the year. As a council member, Jeff, what might also be on that list you'd like to see happen in 2019?
Oh, on that list in 2019? You know, I don't know if we could actually get another thing built in, in 2019. I think 2019 has to be thought about of what's going to support these, these businesses. We need to be talking with developers. We need to be talking with groups that wanna support the hospital by building maybe a facility close to them. Obviously, a building like that's not gonna be built in 2019, but maybe some footwork and, and learning about different things that are out there. You know, I would love to see some progress on the ambulance barn made. We've had made great strides with the ambulance service, getting the full-time people in there that we need. Still need to figure out a building for the ambulance service and get that done. I'd love to see that come together in, in 2019. I'd also like to see more downtown development. Again, we can get some new, new places in downtown with Murray's on Main coming on. I think that really gives people an opportunity to, to have that, that core restaurant downtown to, to drive more people and then hopefully get some more people to open up more shops. And hopefully we can maybe bring, maybe a new event to the community this year. I think that's important, always trying to bring new fun, family-friendly things to the area. And I think that there's, there's an opportunity for some of those things to, to happen.
Want to talk right now about an indoor facility, including a swimming pool down the road. What's your take on that?
I, I think, you know, you look back at the, at the surveys that went out and some of the studies that have been done, it's the number one thing we're being asked for. Obviously, it's important. Obviously, it's what our residents want. Of course, we have to look at it financially and make sure that not only can we support building a facility like that, but we can support operating a facility like that. And that's where the study, we have to work with Parks and Rec. We have to work with our budgets. We have to look at everything and make sure that we can make it happen. As an idea, I love it. I wanna see it here. I think that our community deserves it. I think it will make our community grow. I think it'll bring more residents, grow that tax base. But we gotta make sure that we don't, you know, step into it too quickly. But it's definitely something that I think I'd love to see.
And outside of the council, you're involved in a lot of groups, including the Toma Lions, aren't you?
That's correct. Yep. I've been a Lion for, for many years, worked a lot of different projects with them. It's another thing that's special about Toma, not just Lions, but all the service organizations that are out there. We, we're an amazing community when it comes to service organizations. I, I think that we really help each other out any way that we can. And that's, that's awesome.
Alright, as we wrap it up with Jeff Cram, we're down at the ground round. A meet the candidates night on February 6th. All the candidates are down here, some are opposed, some are not. Now Jeff, as we mentioned, is not. Let me ask you out of curiosity, your dad, John, was on the council for many years. Does he influence you deciding to throw your hat in the ring?
Um, you know, I, I don't really think he influenced me to throw my hat in the ring. I think, I think he enjoyed his time on the council. I think we both think that it's a very enjoyable time. I like to get involved in things like that. Like anything, he, you know, he knows I have a young family. He knows that that's, that's nights away from my family. So, you know, he wants to make sure that we're, we're getting all those things done as well. I think he's, I think he's proud that I'm on the council. But, you know, he wasn't really a driving factor. A driving factor was my other involvement in the community and the other things that I'm doing. I just really felt that somebody else needed to step up and, and try and take that role.
Okay. Just between you and I, to wrap it up, Jeff, has there ever been an issue council-related where you've gone to him and said, hey, what do you think about this?
Oh, I, I mean, I, I think there's lots of issues that I ask for his opinion on. He's a resident of the city of Toma. Now, I talk to a lot of different residents in the city of Toma and get their opinion on him. Of course, as my father, he sat on the council. He's got, he's got a point of view that I, I value and trust. But most importantly, he's a resident of the city. And that's who we should be talking to.
Your lifetime resident of Toma, Jeff, or not?
I went to college in Oshkosh for four years, four and a half years. And then I lived up in Warrens for about four years. So didn't get too far away. Ultimately, I've always considered Toma home.
Okay. I know you have a wife and how many kids?
I have one, I have a wife, Nicole, and a five-year-old daughter.
Five years old already? Wow.
Yeah. It feels like just yesterday. So.
Alright. Even though you're running unopposed in April, people should still get out and vote, shouldn't they?
Absolutely. I think voting is one of the most fundamental things we can do in this country. Get out, vote. There's gonna be other things. I think there's gonna be a referendum on the ballot this year. Lots of things to get out and, and vote on.
We haven't even gone to the school referendum. It's huge, isn't it?
Yep.
Alright, Jeff, I lied to you. I said give me a couple of minutes. I lied about that. I apologize for that. I apologize to Mr. Otto from the radio station waiting to talk to you. But thanks for sitting down with me.
Thanks, Greg. Appreciate the time.
Alright, the only person running for council that has an opponent is Wayne Kling. And Wayne is mingling right now. So before we talk with Wayne, we talk with Toma Mayor Mike Murray. Mike, I wasn't sure coming out here, what type of turnout there'd be, but it's decent turnout, right?
Yeah, yeah. It's very, it's a, it's a very good turnout. You know, I think, you know, one of the difficult things is reiterating the importance of these types of things. When it comes to city government, when it comes to state government, when it comes to federal government, you know, social media, everybody puts opinions out and thought processes and, and you know, how they feel about things. And everybody's entitled to what they feel, what they think, you know, the direction they wanna go. But these, these city-level things are so important because this determines how a city grows. Really, when it comes down to it, you know, it's the city council that's gonna approve or disapprove of things. And if you aren't familiar with who it is that's in your district representing your thought processes, and, and you wonder sometimes, well, why doesn't the city do this? Or why doesn't the city do that? You know, these are the events where you wanna, you wanna reach out to those people, get the understanding from those people of, you know, what is it they believe? You know, when it comes to, you know, TID districts have been controversial. You know, when it comes to buying land for the city, you know, it becomes controversial. When it becomes the location of buildings, it can become confrontational. It's imperative that you know who's representing you because you're voting for these people, which means you're voting for the direction of the city.
And the fact that we have three candidates running with an opponent, that's a good thing, right?
Oh, it's a fantastic thing. Because again, it, it puts out there the fact that you're given the ability to hear different thought processes. Now, that doesn't mean, this isn't like, this isn't like, you know, at the state or the, the federal level where, you know, one's a Republican, one's a Democrat. You know, there, there, you might find two people that are, are very similar in ideas and thought processes. I, you know, I look at the, the election right now, all three contested races, actually all three of them kinda sit a ways apart on, on the way they view things. And it's gonna, it's gonna be a very crucial election depending on what people want.
Well, I wanted to plug in, I'm sure you're aware of this, this coming Wednesday at 4:30, it's kind of a dedication for the update at the railroad depot, right?
Yes, yes. I actually just got the email this morning that they're gonna be doing some announcements down there and have, you know, have every intention of being there. I do, I do have to meet with the state inspector earlier that day. So as long as he's, he's done and out, I'll be able to be down there.
Okay. So you sit down with Toma, Mike Murray, down at the ground round right now. It's a meet the candidates night for all the candidates running for council, some are opposed, some are not. We talked with everybody. We'll talk with Wayne Kling in a moment. But before we talk about that, Mike, boy, another, we lose another good man, Denny Greeno, don't we?
Yeah. You can't say enough good things about Denny. Denny served the city, you know, dedicated and donated his time in so many capacities between different boards he was on, being on the city council, so many of the youth sports programs. It, people like him are irreplaceable. You know, he reached out to me and, and, you know, said that he'd be interested in getting, he had taken a little time off and he was interested in getting back on some boards. And, and you know, and that's not an, an easy thing to replace. Because he was a very diplomatic human being. He, you know, he was a very even-keeled, thought things out, you know, tried to weigh out the, you know, the goods, the bads. And, and on top of it all, just a great human being. And he's raised some great kids. You know, Denny had a great laugh, great smile. And sometimes, at, at the end of a life, you know, when a man smiles, Fyodor Dostoevsky once said that, you know, if you wanna see the true soul of a man, I can't quote over mate him, but it was something to the effect of, you know, don't listen to his noble ideas or the way he thinks. Listen to him laugh. And if he laughs well, you've found a good man. And Denny Greeno laughed well.
I should mention, Denny did not want a funeral or visitation, but there is a get-together for him this coming Friday, right?
I believe it is this Friday. I don't know if it was last Friday or this Friday.
I was told this coming Friday.
This coming Friday. Okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's, um, yeah, I understand it. I, I echo his sentiments. I'm not a fan. I've, I've kinda told my daughter that if, if something happens to me and my mother's no longer with us, that I, I really have no interest in a funeral either. So I completely understand that, you know, his sentiment of don't have a funeral, just, you know, life is over and, and it's time to move on.
I want to jump back to Denny Greeno for a moment because when you and I sat down at Mayor two weeks ago, the first thing I asked you was, how's it going? You said it's been a tough week. And at that time, you knew Denny didn't have a long time to be with. So that's, you were kinda talking about it, right?
Yeah, yeah. It's, you know, we all, you know, we had the, the State of the Union address. And I watched on social media as people, you know, go one way or the other. And, and, you know, they, we get caught up in the presidency or we get caught up in, in belief systems on, on things that are facing the world. And, you know, the one thing that we tend to forget is the fact that, you know, we, we have to live too. You know, we, if we take too much time away on, on things that we don't have control over, we forget to enjoy the things we do have control over. And, you know, a, a great man like Denny Greeno passing away, you know, he's, it's a reminder. It's a reminder that enjoy what you have. Because from his diagnosis to his, his final breath was not a tremendously long period of time.
No. Okay. Recently, since we sat down last time, we had that cold bitter smell. I can't tell you, Mike, how many people I talked to that had dog stories. I would imagine Sadie didn't want to go outside either, did she?
She wasn't, she wasn't a fan. She, uh...
Probably wasn't chasing me squirrels, was she?
No, no. You know, that actually was kind of intriguing. It was kind of funny because, you know, just like human beings, you know, we open the door, we're warm in the house. door, we're warm in the house, but we open the door and all of a sudden, you, you step and you get that deep breath and you get that, that blast of air. And I would, I'd open the door and she'd come trotting over like it was just any other day, and all of a sudden she'd get to that door opening and she'd just stop and look at me like, "Are you crazy?" And, uh, yeah, let's just say, um, she didn't make any messes in the house, but she saved it until it was the very last minute to have to go because she didn't want to make any more trips than she had to.
Okay, if we jump back to the council races, we're down at the Ground Round, Meet the Candidates going on the other room. Most of the candidates are down here. On paper, we could have three new faces on the council later this year, Mike. As mayor, is that a good thing?
Well, you know, again, what it, what it does is, uh, it, it allows the opportunity, you know, these, these meetings like this, and, and I can't, I can't stress this enough, it is not about the way I want the city to run. It's not about the way that a candidate wants the city to run. It's not about any individual. It's about coming together as a council and coming to logical deductions. You know, I've always used the analogy that, uh, I'm not a huge fan of mushrooms. And if I had my druthers, I wouldn't have a mushroom in the restaurant. But you know what? There's lots of people that like mushrooms, and so of course, we'll have mushrooms. So, we need to realize that, you know, uh, what we have to sidle with is people need to find that candidate that, that mirrors what their vision is for the city because a lot of it comes down to, um, how rapidly the city's going to grow, and that's, the candidates do differ quite drastically on, on those topics.
That's the one thing I've noticed is people watch this and they talk with the candidates that are being, that are opposed, there is a lot of variety there, and you're right, that's a good thing.
It is. It absolutely is because, again, in a city of 10,000, you know, you're given eight representatives, okay? Now, you, and, you know, we don't want just one voice speaking for 10,000 people. That's why, you know, it's important to have it divided off into groups, but it's also important for people to understand, um, you know, we, uh, you know, I'll go back to the topic of ATV, UTV. You know, it's, it's a topic that was, was, uh, you know, hotly contested. And after the fact, I asked, or I had people ask me, "Well, why, why is this person going for it? Why are they not going for it? And why, why, why?" Well, the, the biggest thing I could tell them is educate yourself about who is your representative and ask them that question. You know, because that's why they're there. That's why we have the voting process.
All right, so wrapping up with Toma Mayor Mike Murray down at the Ground Round. Mike, uh, the cold weather kind of changed your timing with Murray's on main as far as getting some things done, right?
Really did. We're behind, um, that, that cold weather, uh, coincidentally, that, you know, it, it, it was the, it was the timing because the, the cold weather didn't hinder work inside.
Right.
But during that timeframe, every piece of kitchen equipment, the dishwasher, all the stuff was scheduled to be delivered during that week. So what happens is, is that, all that stuff ended up on docks and basically stranded. And, um, it's put everything behind because, you know, again, I was, I was talking to Greg Evans earlier and, you know, from the days when he worked at Toro, you know, Toro still is producing things and, and still has to ship things, but if trucks aren't moving, well, then their docks get backed up and then other dock, you know? So, it was a, you know, it, I, I feel, I feel bad for the shipping companies because what can they do? They can't run trucks in that, in that wicked cold, but the factories and, and the people that have to ship things, they've got things backing up. So it really kind of threw us off. We're gonna, we're gonna plan on doing VIP night, March 9th. Um, we just did a, uh, open interviews, uh, the, down at the Chamber of Commerce this past Monday from 4:00 to 7:00. The next two Mondays, um, you know, uh, February 11th and February 18th, we're going to do from 4:00 to 7:00, open interviews. We're hiring all positions.
All righty.
Um, you know, it's, you know, from bus people to waiters and waitresses and bartenders and banquet bartenders and chef cook, or chefs and sous, uh, sous chefs and prep cooks and dishwasher, you know, just the full gamut. Um, and, you know, you can either apply online or print off an application, bring it down with you, or we'll have them down there, you know, we'll, uh, we'll be doing interviews. But, uh, before you know it, um, we'll be ready to open the doors and serve the, the community.
Well, a lot of people are talking about it, Mike. It can't happen soon enough. Thank you so much for sitting down and talking with me, and we'll, uh, see you Monday night at the Community Hall.
Absolutely. Thanks, Greg. I appreciate your time.
All right, continuing down at the Ground Round on a gloomy Wednesday, February 6th. Talking Chamber Director Tina Thompson. Tina, I'm not going to lie to you, I was not sure what type of turnout you were going to have for this meet and greet for the council members, but it's been a tremendous turnout, hasn't it?
You know, I'm very happy with the turnout. I will be honest with you, I had no idea really what to expect either. This is the first time we've done an event like this. Um, but I think clearly people are becoming aware of the issues, they're becoming aware of how important city council is to the city.
Yeah.
Um, so I think people really are starting to pay attention.
Now, down the road, uh, maybe on a fair question, do you plan on having like a candidate's forum at all, or...
We've had one request for that, um, by a candidate. I, I don't know that answer at this point.
Okay, so it may not happen?
May, may or may not. Um, if it's a turnout of 50 or less people, I don't know how effective that is because the people that come are usually the ones that have their mind made up, so we shall see.
Okay, so we're still early February. Is this still a busy time for the chamber?
This is a very busy time for the chamber. So right now, we're working on annual banquet. We're working on our Beyond the Bog campaign. Yes, yes, we're very excited about that. Um, our Beyond the Bog campaign, we are working with, very closely with the high schools to put some workforce panels together. So our next workforce panel will be on trades and construction, so setting up that with the school district and area employers. Um, we're working on putting together an HR conference here in April, so that will probably be between 1500 people and gathering little speakers, that type of thing. So, we do also have a career job fair coming up in March, so any employer that is looking to increase their employment field, um, should definitely have a table at that event.
Okay, a couple of things that people have asked me, and they are assuming this is going to happen, let me just do those that quickly. Uh, music on Milwaukee Street, will that happen again?
Uh, we are working out some details on what that's going to look like. Um, we're hopefully going to have some announcements here in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, what about Kite Fest?
That is on for June 15th. Very family-friendly event, so we encourage kids from zero to 100 to bring their families.
All right, Tina, early February, uh, Chamber Banquet coming up, uh, and you, is it going to be Bree? Bree's doing the music this year?
Bree Morgan's doing the music this year, yes.
Bree Morgan, she's really good.
Yes, we're really excited about this because we're also unveiling Toma's new logo.
Okay, yes, Tony, yes.
All of our new branding is happening then. So we've spent years kind of talking about getting to this point, and now we are ready to launch, and we have just a fantastic team of players that have been working towards this goal, and it's finally materializing.
That's coming out the last Monday this month, right?
It is. It's a few short weeks away, Greg.
Okay, so a new logo, that's going to be exciting.
It is.
Can you give me a hint? Can you tell me what it looks like, or...
I could.
Okay. Okay, but you won't, will you?
But I won't. Um, I will say that we're really trying to tie in a lot of Toma's elements into what this is. Um, so we've also developed some logos for the city of Toma and Forward Toma that throughout the years have kind of just adopted our logo as theirs as well, so we'll be branching that out a little bit.
Okay, if I'm looking in right now, is it too late to be a part of the chamber, or...
It's never too late to be a part of the chamber.
I mean, as far as your banquet, I'm sorry.
Yep, nope, not too late for that either. We'll try to accommodate as many as we can.
All right, thank you, Tina. I know you want to go mingle with the people. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Greg.
And thank you for putting this together.
Yep, thanks, as always.
All right, so wrapping up out here at the Ground Round on a gloomy Wednesday, February 6th, it's the Meet the Candidates Night. A lot of candidates are running with opponents for the city council in April, and this is Wayne Kling. Wayne, you run against Donna Evans in April. We talked with Donna a little bit earlier. Uh, you and I talked a lot. Why is it so important for you, Wayne, to continue to be a part of the council?
Well, Greg, there's things that I would like to follow up on, some of the things that I put on agenda, and one of them is the restoration of that Boy Scout log cabin.
Mm-hmm.
That's important to me as well as the citizens of Toma, and we've raised $8,000. Uh, the community has, uh, participated in that, uh, raising the funds for the restoration of that cabin, and I'd like to see that it is going to be in the 2020 budget for renovation, so whatever is raised will be put towards the city's, uh, monies to restore that building. That's one of the things. Plus, the other things, I like to be part of Toma's growth, and we have a lot of infrastructure in the city of Toma that is being, uh, planned, and, uh, the master plan for the city of Toma at Superior Avenue has taken effect. Uh, we'll be putting a new lighting system in, uh, this year.
Yep.
So, a lot of things that are being planned in the future need to be looked at and voted on and to bring Toma more, uh, a, a, a bigger population. Our goal is to be, uh, about 10,000 or a little over 10,000. That'll help with the, uh, city's, uh, tax revenue, and it'll help the taxpayers also as far as, uh, the taxes will be lower the more population we have.
Okay, now I've talked with all the candidates. Myriam Kaminsky is not here tonight, but I talked with everybody else, Wayne, including yourself, Tina Thompson, the chamber, Mayor Mike Murray. Uh, so let me ask what I've asked all the other people that are running for council, getting their feedback, and 2019, later this year, you know what's going to happen? The ATV will come back, that issue on your agenda. What's your take on that?
Well, I've had many of my constituents contact me in regarding to this. The biggest problem I have with that is a safety issue. I don't have a, a problem with it as long as routes are established and they don't infiltrate the city streets themselves. So that's where I stand and a lot of my constituents stand on, on those grounds too. Uh, so I, I guess, uh, we'll have to see, uh, if people can communicate, call, every one of them call their councilman after April and express how they, how they feel about ATV, ATVs, that'll give the councilmen, uh, a better idea on how to vote, whether to have ATVs or whether not to have ATVs.
All right, you've, you're almost at the end of your first two-year term on the council, Wayne. What have you learned in two years that you didn't realize you would learn by being on the council? What jumps out almost two years in your first term that surprised you and now you know all about it? What would that be?
Uh, the workings of the government itself. Anyone running for councilman, uh, is not going to, they may have ideas on what they would like to be, uh, implemented, but they don't know the, the process that it takes to get something done. Uh, we have, we now have a historical preservation ordinance and a committee where we didn't have it before I became councilman. And that took about a year to get implemented by contacting the State Historical Society and having them put a, uh, presentation, uh, for the council to see the benefits of having a, uh, historical preservation ordinance. That goes along with the, uh, certification, the state certification for tax incentives for businesses that want to improve their bill, their business by, uh, having 20% off their state income tax and 20% off their federal taxes.
Right now, we're at the Ground Round. It's a Meet the Candidates Night going on the other room for all the candidates that are running either on our polls or opposed to the city council in April. And this is kind of your thing because you mingle, you talk to people, and you're good at that, aren't you? You, you love talking to people. What, let me ask you this, when you've been talking, I know we, you've been here for an hour, mingling with people, Wayne, is there a concern or concerns out there that you're hearing from the people?
Well, the obvious one is that people don't want their taxes raised.
Sure.
That's number one, and they want transparency in, in the city government as well as state and federal. And, but they want dedicated people, people that are going to embrace community projects. People need to volunteer for certain, for certain organizations and, and get some fulfillment out of that. Now, my family's been here since 1859, and they have contributed to this community, but I want to see growth happen. I want to see that people can come to Toma and say, "Wow, this is a nice place to live." Now, we're having, uh, I'm running for school board as well as, as councilman. And the big thing right now with school board is whether, and it's on a referendum, whether we're going to have a junior ROTC program.
Correct.
Within a package of other things that are, uh, related to the school functions, right?
Correct.
So that's a very, very good thing. It'll be a first for Toma, plus a first for Northern Wisconsin because there's none above Milwaukee, Wisconsin. We only have five in the state, a junior ROTC program, and that is, uh, good for Milwaukee and Kenosha area and some private schools, but we, we have some major issues in our high school right now where a junior ROTC program would be, uh, would correct a lot of behavior problems. And I'm saying a junior ROTC program is a citizen program. It's not so much as a recruiting, uh, tool for getting, uh, uh, children or high school-aged people to be in the, um, military. It, it, but it does have structure, it does have discipline, it does have guidance and direction, and it gives the kids more of a fulfilling direction for what they're going to do after they, they leave high school. It's a reward system. It's a, a system where they have teamwork, drill and ceremony, and, and they have a, a good sense of well-being once they finish the four-year program. It's, they're not committed, they can do one year and say, "This program is not for me," or they can do four years and gain three, three ranks up if they decide to go into the military. So that is, is very good because right now in, in Toma, we have a drug problem with a lot of the juveniles. We just had it, I think it was about two weeks ago, at Fireman's Park, a kid had marijuana in his, in his backpack, and he went ahead and went and met these other ones that he called up to sell his drugs to, and they beat him up and they all got arrested, and they stole all his, his money and credit cards. Well, you need some kind of, uh, some kind of support and direction for these kids. They're just, sometimes, not all of them, because we do have some that graduate from high school that are, excel very good, but for the, for a lot of them, they got behavior problems.
All right, right now, we're wrapping up out the Ground Round, round here on a Wednesday, February 6th, for Meet the Candidates Night, meet and greet the candidates, all the candidates running for city council in April. This is Wayne Kling, who's running against Donna Evans, we talked to earlier. Wayne, when April rolls around, part of April, and I know you have a flyer in front of you, maybe some of the stuff you've already hit on, but what will be your platform to hope to get you reelected?
Well, the main thing is we need to preserve Toma's history. That's, I've always been a, a historian. I had a good teacher, I went to Toma High School, and, uh, I was in, uh, a history class, and she gave me some insight into history. It's all about education, it's all about reading. A lot of people don't read enough, you know? But as far as, uh, I just want to do items that are progressive for Toma and embrace those. That, that's probably the most important thing besides, uh, making sure that the Boy probably the most important thing besides, uh, making sure that the Boy Scout cabin, you know, that is on the National Historical Register is, is renovated and used as a community center in addition to having the Boy Scout. There's a lot of things that, that come up on the agenda, like approving liquor licenses.
Yep, yep.
Uh, building permits or, or different things like that. You have to, uh, be in, in tune with the park and rec and, and, uh, public works and how all the different departments, uh, have the impact on Tomah and different committees and all that. I did want to say that my experience as being a, uh, retired from the army has helped me a lot in making more sound, uh, decisions. But I couldn't do it any better without my constituents in my district. You know, I'm on several committees, like the ambulance committee, uh, the Board of Appeals. I'm, I'm a member of the American Legion, the DAV, member of the Chamber of Commerce, and member of our museum. We have a great, great museum. There's a lot of things that people can embrace in Tomah, like, uh, we have a great historical, uh, society and museum. We have a great library for people to go to. Uh, we, we just have a, a good theater, an area community theater that we could, people can go to or be part or be a member of. And, uh, so there are a lot of things that we, we have that other communities don't have. So you want to be supportive of those, those, uh, type of, uh, agencies in Tomah, you know? That's very important. I guess that's, uh, probably one of my priorities is to make sure that they're recognized and supported, you know? The area community theater, the library, and, uh, the different other, uh, agencies in Tomah that really need help. The veterans, uh, need support. We have a veterans organization. The council just voted for, to help the homeless vets of $180,000 so that we can, we can have those people recognized for their service and help out a lot of veterans. So we have a great thing. We have the VA in Tomah and we're, we're having a lot of infrastructure with a new hospital and a new, uh, a new ambulance center where there's a little discussion on that, where it's going to be built. So I'd like to be part of that.
Sure.
So we can vote for that. And, uh, we got a can, a Gunderson Cancer Center that's coming up. And, and then there's talk about having a rec center.
Yep.
Which is an indoor swimming pool. So there are a lot of decisions to make. And I hope that the people in the various council districts can expect, express their, their wishes on how they want the, the Tomah City Council to vote.
All right, Wayne Kling. For the people who don't know Wayne, I know Wayne very well. A lifetime resident of Tomah, right?
Right.
Okay. Went to high school in Tomah?
I went to high school, yes.
Okay.
For, in Tomah and, uh, went in the military for 30 years. And I work, I work at Challenge Academy. And I also work for Gloria Dippin, who has started, uh, several group homes. Two in Tomah and one in, uh, Warrantz and another one that she's completing and inspired at. And these are for the mentally handicapped or behavior problem kids.
And I know you...
And when I talk kids, I'm talking.
Right.
In their twenties, 21, 23, different. So there's a lot of support systems out there for people that, that need help.
Okay, Wayne, uh, I know you take your position on the council very serious. Good luck to you in April. Uh, thank you for sitting down and talking with me out here at the ground round on Meet the Candidates. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Greg. Good to see you.
Okay, so got a little portion of the update. We've been out here at the ground round on Wednesday, February 6th for Meet the Candidates. All the candidates, with the exception of Miriam Kaminsky, were here that are running for city council. Some are running opposed, some are running unopposed, but a very nice turnout. And we want to thank all the candidates, Mayor Mike Murray and Chamber Director Tina Thompson for taking time and talking with us. We hope you enjoyed this on the update.